Okay, we have a hearing this morning for HB 566. I left my gavel at home, so I get this really nifty piece of wood to knock on, courtesy of Representative Spleen. So, I'm going to open the hearing this morning for HB 566 requiring permit applications for new landfills to contain a detailed plan for leachate management. And here to introduce the bill is Representative Germana. Good morning, Representative Germana.
Good morning.
Thank you. Makes you legal, your pink card. If anybody wishes to speak, please make sure you have a pink card. And I'd also like to remind committee members that our purpose in these hearings is to receive testimony. If we have questions on what the person has said, that's fine, but we want to make sure we are not arguing back and forth, we are not with the person testifying, that we are not asking leading questions. We are just here to listen to what people have to say regarding the legislation before us. Representative Bixby, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that one of the things that we can do in order to make our process a little bit more efficient is pay attention to, if you hear a witness provide an answer to a question, and it's clear that that is what they are, you know, what they think is in fact the case, don't ask the same question again in a different way because you're not going to get a different answer. So, think about what's your, think about what's going to get the most information out the most efficiently, don't try to, and if the answer, if a question really has been answered, don't, just don't reiterate it.
Thank you. I also want to inform committee members that I have to introduce a bill in election law at 20 after 10, so I will leave the committee in the capable hands of our vice chair, Representative Comtois. And with that, I would like to begin our hearing, and good morning, Representative Germana.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, honorable colleagues. I don't have written testimony, but I did pass around a document, should be enough copies for everybody into for the clerk that I'll be referring to during my introduction. So, the origin of this bill regarding plans for leachate management and transportation, I think we're all aware of reporting over the last year about problems with management of leachate and transportation at some of the landfills here in New Hampshire. Last July, there was an article in New Hampshire Bulletin about infractions, quote, hundreds of infractions, hundreds of times that Casella at their Bethlehem facility failed to keep leachate to its required levels and to file mandatory reports. That article from the Bulletin in July also referred to at least three other facilities in the state that received letters citing deficiencies associated with leachate management. And so, this bill is a very bipartisan bill, as you can see from the sponsorship. We have worked with the Department of Environmental Services. I've also spoken with Mr. Poggi from the Turnkey facility in Rochester to try to better understand how they deal with leachate at that facility. I'll be speaking in a moment to some specific changes that I think I will be coming forward with an amendment based on conversations with the experts at DES and the folks at Turnkey. But I think it's clear that we recognize that this is a problem in the state, as you said, that that article last summer made it clear that there are a number of facilities, and some facilities with literally citing hundreds of potential violations. We need to address this concern particularly as we become more and more aware of the dangers of PFAS, these, this leachate, this so-called trash juice is filled with these materials. They are disposed of ultimately through our wastewater treatment plants, and so the danger to public health, both in terms of potential onsite problems, potential transportation issues, but also as we consider how they are ultimately disposed of. This is an issue that a bipartisan group of our legislature has come together to address. With the increased frequency and severity of rainstorms that we've seen, you know, once in a century floods, every three to five years over the past few years, we are seeing larger and larger quantities of leachate being produced at these facilities, and that is part of the reason why we're in the problem that we are in, is because the plans for leachate management did not, when they were, these facilities were brought into operation, they were not designed for the amount and severity of the rainstorms that we've been getting. So, they're not adequately prepared in many cases to be able to deal with the amount of leachate that's being produced at these facilities. So, again, that is one of the driving motives behind this legislation is the recognition that with the increased severe weather we've had, that we need to be much more mindful about how we are managing leachate onsite, transporting it, and ultimately seeing it disposed of. I want to speak very briefly to one of the objections I've already seen about potential concerns, that this would somehow be a problem for businesses, that this would hamper the ability of businesses to innovate. Obviously, what we know about PFAS is changing, methods for treating PFAS are changing rapidly. Businesses certainly need to be able to come up with new methods for treating the leachate. Turnkey does some really interesting, a couple of different ways that they pre-treat their leachate before it is transported actually through pipes rather than trucks to a facility, a wastewater facility. So, we need that innovation. This bill does not in any way hamper innovation. This simply says, when you're applying for a permit, I'm going to talk about the language a little bit in a minute, when you're applying for a permit, you have to have a plan, a detailed plan for how you're going to manage the leachate onsite, how you are going to transport that leachate offsite, and a recognition that you have some responsibility for making sure that it is disposed of in a safe way on the other side. It doesn't dictate how that has to be done. It says nothing at all about specific methods of doing these things, which would, you know, instantiate in statute requirements that could hamper business development, none of that. And there is a passage in the second paragraph of this bill which says very clearly, when you change, you have new contracts, for example, for transportation or disposal of the leachate, you simply have to then report those new contracts. It doesn't, as you said, in any way restrict the content of those contracts. It simply says that when you enter into new agreements, those new agreements have to be reported as part of the plan that is provided to the department. So, what I've distributed to you all is a, it's not a formal draft of an amendment, it's some new language that I wanted to share with you all, and depending on how our conversation goes, you know, sending this to OLS to have as an amendment for when we do a work session or an executive session. But some of these changes that you see in the handout that I provided are the result of the conversations I've had with Mike Wimsat and with Mr. Poggi from Waste Management at Turnkey. So, if you look at the bill itself, the page that has State of New Hampshire at the top, unfortunately, I apologize that the photocopy that you all received, the kind of highlighted portions are very, very difficult to see. They got kind of washed out in the photocopy. If you look very, very hard, you can faintly see outlines, but I'll point to them in this text. And if you look at the other side of the bill, you will see the specific references that are, were highlighted on the first side. The bill, as you can see, has two paragraphs. The first paragraph is about a leachate management plan, to say that when you're applying for a permit, and again, I'm going to speak about that language, you have to have a plan. That plan contains certain elements about management, transportation, and disposal for the lifetime of the facility, including post-closure period. The second paragraph contains some specific language around contracts that operators would have with companies, again, for disposal or transportation or disposal. When I met with Director Wimsat and spoke to the folks at Turnkey about their operation, it became clear in the bill as it is written, there's some language in that second paragraph specifically about long-term contracts that is inappropriate for that section of the bill. We can't, you know, completely understandably, we can't require these facilities to be able to demonstrate that they have contracts 20 or 30 years down the road. That's not how it works. And I appreciate that feedback. So, what we did is we removed some of that language from the contractual paragraph, the second paragraph, and we put that up, the plan is to move it up to the first paragraph, right, so that it is not required in terms of demonstrating a contract that contains these things, but instead to say that your plan, when you submit for a permit, must contain details about how you plan to deal with these things. So, if you see my summary of proposed changes, I'll walk you through very briefly just five changes. All of the language from the bill you have in front of you is there, it's been moved around, and it's been adjusted in a couple of cases. So, after discussion with DES, I think it makes sense to change the phrase "permit for construction" to "operating approval." That is, as I understand it, a more accurate reflection of the permitting process. Number two, at the suggestion of DES, an amendment that I would plan would include expansions of landfills. They said that that was, as far as they were concerned, entirely consistent with what they do anyway, how they would evaluate applications for expansions of landfills. Third, this has to do with that language that was moved out of the contract section up into the section requiring a plan. The language throughout the entire life of the facility, including the post-closure period, has been moved, as I said, from the contractual requirement section up to the details of the leachate management plan. Likewise, number four, the language regarding frequency of shipments and details of contingency plans has also been moved into the section on the leachate management plan. Obviously, again, these are things that, by their nature, contingencies, things change, business relationships change. We can't require all of those things over a long period of time in contract, but we need to make sure, number one, that they are in the plan from the beginning, and number two, that when changes are made in those contracts, that they are subsequently submitted to DES. And finally, there is a section at the bottom, the new sub-paragraph. This, I think, is likely to be removed because upon discussion with Director Wimsat, I think some of the other changes above actually remove the necessity for adding this paragraph, in particular especially that change regarding "operating approval," that phrase. So, that is an overview of the bill. I hope I have explained it in a way that makes sense, and also in a way that allows you to see how the changes keep the purpose and the language of the original bill, but after consultation have probably something that we would want to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Representative Germana, and I appreciate, I want to tell you, I appreciate the work that you've done and the collaboration you've done with the department on this bill to bring it to us in a more workable, more understandable form, and I appreciate your time and your work on that. Representative Bixby, you had a question?
Yeah, I have, it's just a clarifying question. Since, since the highlighting didn't come through, I just want to make sure that when you, what you're talking about is, what's being deleted is from line 20 to line 23?
Yes, that's correct, Representative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, Representative. One question I have is, so you're saying that Waste Management has in place this leaching information available to us, but Casella doesn't? Is that correct in saying that? Am I correct in saying that?
No, I, thank you for the question. I don't believe that's the case. By rule, right now, a number of these things are already required and are overseen, and that's, you know, for example, that article referred to actions that kind of DES has taken with regard to a number of operators in the state. So, I believe that DES has this information on, you know, from all of the operators.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Representative King.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Representative, for testifying on this bill. What recourse is there, if, if any, that if the plan that is provided in order to get the permit later falls through, you know, they don't, they don't follow through on their plan, or something happens where, oops, we didn't quite pull it off like we thought we would? That's kind of my concern, is, yeah, you, you had a plan, but you didn't execute, and now the water table's been poisoned. What do you say about that? Thank you.
That's an excellent question. Thank you very much. And I would defer on some of the details to DES, I don't know if they're, they're here, if we have some folks? Great, on some of those details. Excellent, thank you. But my understanding is that, first of all, we have to think about the relationship between these operators and DES is an ongoing conversation. So, when it comes to monitoring the plans and whether or not the plans are being implemented, I think that's part of an ongoing relationship between DES and operators. DES also has the ability, again, that, and I can provide the specific citation to the committee, that article from July refers to letters and actually has links to certain letters that DES wrote to some of the operators in the state about deficiencies in their, their management of leachate. So, that's part of an ongoing process. And then, when there are violations, as there, there have been, as you said, DES can speak to the specific mechanisms that they use to have enforcement.
Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this letter that we just got from the BIA, and thanks, Representative Germana, for putting together such a great idea, they, they mentioned that regulation might, whatever they say, instituting a statutory approach, there's a serious risk of statutory parameters turning into restraints on innovation. And I'm just wondering if, if the plans are, are, you know, just, can't be expanded after?
Thank you very much for that question, Representatives. So, two things. Number one, as I, as I mentioned before, there is nothing in this bill that is going to stifle innovation, right? Again, when new contracts are entered into, as new technologies develop, though that information can just be forwarded to DES, right? So, there's nothing that locks them into any particular method or any particular contract. So, I don't see where the argument comes from, that innovation is, is being stifled. As to the first part of that question, I will only say that I worked closely with DES to craft the language, especially in the amendment that I planned to put forward, and DES has told myself and Representative Ebel, who attended that meeting, that they see this as a valuable tool that goes hand in hand with what currently exists in rules. So, we have worked hard to make sure that this isn't simply a duplication of what's in rules, but that it is in fact an effort to put something in statute that helps DES implement rules in a more effective way.
Follow-up?
Thank you. Is there, is there any, any way to write into the language, increasing the plan or changing the plan to respond to failure of the plan?
I think I will punt on that to DES, because I think it is connected to Representative King's question about how DES relates to these operators and what the consequences would be if a company fails to adhere to its plan. So, I think DES can speak to that better than I can.
Anybody else have questions? Seeing none, thank you, Representative Germana, and I'd like to call Notch Graze.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Niche Graze, for the Business and Industry Association. I appreciate you all taking the time to look at the letter that I handed out earlier today. So, let me just start off by saying we do oppose this bill as it has been introduced to you. Based on the representatives' prior testimony, it sounds like there's going to be a substantial rewrite, so I'd certainly like to have the opportunity to take a look at that and see how that would affect our position. But one thing that I would like to point out, which is not in the letter, but which I thought of as the testimony proceeded this morning, was simply asking the question of whether this legislation was necessary. I think there was a reference to an article in the New Hampshire Bulletin which cites New Hampshire DES issuing a number of letters of deficiency, and taking a look at those letters, they cite specific provisions within the ENV 806 rules, and basically said, hey, operator, you're doing things wrong. So, there are already rules in place that regulate these areas, and the point of the letters is obviously to induce the operators to make changes to manage leachate in a different manner. So, based on the description of the forthcoming amendment and the ability of operators to simply alter the contracts, you know, imagine a scenario where I'm an operator, or I, I would like to be an operator, so I submit a plan to DES, and then I can just go and change a contract a month later. So, what's the point of that? Is kind of my question. It seems that, to me, that a better option is to allow the administrative rules to continue what they normally continue, which is give DES authority to regulate this particular area, refine kind of what the federal, federal permitting rules are as well. And as part of that process, assist operators if and when issues arise. That's certainly part of DES's technical assistance. It's something they can do in a nimble fashion within the rule framework, which is much harder to do in the statute, if you were to put this in statute, because in statute, they'd have to come back to the legislature, make changes, rather than take a look at their existing rules, or write the rules in a manner that allows them to look at things like new innovative products for treatment of PFAS, you know, as, as we learn more about that, as operators experiment with, you know, what could we do to pre-treat leachate before it goes to the wastewater treatment facility? You know, is something like a resin solution going to work? Is something like a carbon-based solution going to work? Is it going to be the case that RO filters are the best option? As they really narrow that down, DES has that authority within their, their current regulatory framework, and certainly they could rewrite the rule, the rules if necessary to allow them to do that, as other states have done, to help address new and emerging issues that arise out of leachate management, as well as, of course, provide technical assistance for best practices. So, I just don't, I think, you know, although I haven't seen the language for the substantial rewrite of the amendment, I believe it's the case that our position would be to continue to oppose it based on the fact that it's simply not necessary. Happy to take questions.
Representative Bixby.
Yes, thank you for taking my question. So, the way I'm reading the bill, it is essentially requiring that when a landfill is being planned, it is that, that part of that planning has to, requires advanced planning for how leachate is going to be managed, and that's going to be something that gets built into the infrastructure of the landfill. But it also looks like, the way that it's phrased here, it allows for updating as requirements, you, you mentioned contracts, so this is, this is a plan for like 30 years. So, you're not going to be able to plan your contracts for 30 years.
Of course.
So, it leaves that, it seems like it leaves that, that avenue is still open for changing contracts as you need to. So, I'm not quite sure how this is going to be, if you have, if you have, if it gives a lot of leeway for discussion between the department and the, and the operator, I'm not, could you explain a little bit more how that is going to be limiting the operator's freedom?
Well, the department and the operator already have the opportunity to have that discussion, and leachate's already managed, I'm going to call it an item, but trash juice is already managed, right? So, it's not like you can start up a landfill and just, you know, dump it into the river. That's not the process. There's a whole regulatory framework laid out under the 806 rules about how you treat this. So, as you plan a new landfill, you already have to look at the rules, and you already have to have in place, you know, a plan, engineering, engineering design, and then in response to what's actually happening in the landfill, you have to make adjustments as that goes, which is going to require discussion with DES under their existing rules. So, again, I'm not sure what this legislation adds to the regulatory framework other than to, you know, freeze it in place. And obviously, as we've heard from earlier testimony, there are some concerns about the bill as introduced and the language as introduced causing an interpretation to be that you have to have something like, you know, a 50-year contract, which simply, I think, everybody recognizes is not doable.
Follow-up?
Yes, so, I'm, I'm not quite sure where the, where this changes the relationship with the rules, other than just clarifying how the rules will go forward.
So, to build off your question, Representative, I'm not sure how this changes the rules other than it constrains the current rulemaking process in, in a manner which, again, I haven't seen the amendment, I don't know if that's something that the committee would be amenable to, that constrains the ability of DES to adopt rules that reflect what they're actually seeing. Thank you.
Representative Howard, then Representative Potenza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the way I see it is that this, this bill would establish a starting point or a commitment to, to a plan, and, and if we wait to make rules that respond to conditions that have already, say, gone bad, then the horse is out of the barn. So, it seems like this, this amendment, this bill will help us to establish a commitment to dealing with leachate in the best possible way.
So, my response to that would be, as I understood, the reason for this legislation was because of an article in the New Hampshire Bulletin citing DES letters of deficiency based on existing rules. So, again, there are already rules in place, why do we need this legislation?
Representative Potenza.
So, I have two questions, if I, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your testimony. So, would you, would you think that 1,000 violations in a row be evidence in these letters that they're not effective in changing behavior?
I can't speak to, you know, the process of enforcement at the departmental level. I, what I would say is that, you know, attempting but not capturing the existing rules to rewrite them in a different place is not necessarily going to change how those, you know, what, what people do with those.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, are you familiar with the current Rule Now environment, 806.53, that requires no less than two locations for leachate treatment, or disposals shall be available by written agreement to manage the quantity of leachate generated by the facility during its active life? And then it, you've got furthermore, I've got a question. Because basically, your, your testimony is contradicting, this bill doesn't set new rules.
Representative?
It just sets the guardrails for that. Are you familiar with, these are already in place? Like, the leachate stuff that you already have to do is already in place? It's not changing that? It's just putting some parameter?
Thank you, Representative Potenza. That's exactly the point that I'm trying to make, is there's no reason, this bill is entirely unnecessary if it, the entire purpose of it is to simply move the rules in. simply move the rules into state statute. DES already has the rules in place. They've adopted rules. As far as I'm aware, they work well. And they certainly garner public attention.
Representative Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking my question. Would you say that DES rules are more or less, what's the word I wanna use, protected more or less long-term than a state statute is? Wouldn't you say a state statute is more affirmative of what the state is actually trying to do around those rules? And if there's a presented problem, such as a thousand instances of such a thing happening, a state statute would be more impactful than DES rules?
If I understood the correctly, if I understood the question correctly, Representative Wheeler, you're asking me whether I think that a state statute is longer lasting than the agency rules. My understanding is that generally, the legislature grants agencies the authority to write rules because they recognize that technical experts at the agency are in the best position to assess really the technical aspects as well as new innovations coming forward and adjust those those rules if proper over time. So rather than having to come back to the legislature and go through a legislative process, the rulemaking process can occur at the agency level among those technical experts with stakeholders. They are having input.
Follow up, yes?
I appreciate that. Now, wouldn't it be true that in some instances, say, for instance, I don't know, trash juice is leaching out and poisoning the land of the state, that it's maybe prudent for the legislature to take a step forward and put those rules into statute? You know, there are instances where DES and the technical expertise of the organization should create those rules. And then there are other instances where the public health is so profoundly affected that the legislature and the representatives should do something. Where do you think that line is?
Given that the eight oh six rules exist and they've gone through the jailcar process, therefore seen approval by the legislature, they've been in place for a long period of time. What I would say is that it seems like it's the legislature's policy that DES should regulate leachate. And the agency appears to be doing that.
Representative Haskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Nate. Would you agree that the state has a leachate problem?
I don't know that I would be qualified to judge that, Representative.
Okay, if I may, second question? So is it your understanding that the legislature makes the rules, makes the law, and that the agency writes the rules?
Representative, the the way I would frame it is the legislature sets the general policy, regulate leachate. The agency goes out through the rulemaking process, has created the eight oh six rules. That's what we have in place right now. And it's my belief that those those work well.
Thank you.
Okay, Representative Howard?
Hi, so again, so again, the way that I see it, the the laws and the rules are conceptual. They they, the concept of controlling leachate is is defined in the rules and in the law. And the plan is a is a detailed and specific approach at that site by that by that purveyor that would that would answer the rules, the the concept, that would fill the concept in that at that place by that person or that by that company. So so there is, it's there's a, there's, is is, do you see a difference between the rules and the actual plan as, you know, as a fulfillment of the concept?
I'm not sure I entirely understood the question, Representative Howard, but I will do my best to respond. You know, because the eight oh six rules exist, anyone who wants to open a new landfill in the state would have to keep account of those rules along with any additional rules applicable to them, along with obviously any state statutes permitting, et cetera, at the state and federal level. In their entire engineering for that facility. So it would already be the case that they're that they're taking account of this. So again, there's no need to add additional statute to this because it doesn't actually add anything to what potential new operators are doing. At best, it's repetitive. At worst, it interferes with or would create a conflict with existing rules or potential future rules based on, you know, new technologies coming online or based on, you know, new requirements, you know, maybe the impossibility of certain contractual language, et cetera. And so the only thing that ends up doing is is coming up the works as businesses try to figure out, you know, what are the rules that I'm supposed to follow because I I have a state statute, plus I have these rules. And we're also come, we're also hearing from, you know, other other industry players, you know, here's some new innovative technology, like example PFAS treatment. It's working really well in some other state. We wanna bring it in. You know, it may be the case, and I'm not an expert at New Hampshire's rules, but it may be the case that, you know, like in Vermont, our our agency could say, yep, we're gonna go through our permitting process, make some slight adjustments so we can have that as a potential use here. Whereas if we're in state statute, we're stuck and we have to come back to the legislature, you know, get permission from the legislature, which then would require the agency to rewrite the rules. You're you're taking this long process instead of really shortening it up, which allows, you know, treatment of something like PFAS to occur in a faster manner.
Representative Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. One quick question. Do you see that this to be a burden on on the industry as opposed to what it actually does, in in my opinion, is give us more in-depth look at what's going on in the in the leachate?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we would consider this a burden on the industry. Because again, you'd be setting up this whole another regulatory framework even though one already exists.
Follow up?
Thank you. This, in in my, again, in my opinion, this seems to clarify what's already written. Do you agree with that statement?
I do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony this morning. I'd like to call Tom Tower from Whitefield, representing North Country ABC. Welcome, Mr. Tower. You've asked for three minutes.
Good morning, everyone. There's been so much discussion around the article in the New Hampshire Bulletin. I thought I'd take the opportunity to pass it around. I think it's informative and and probably a good idea that if you can to to take a look at it. First of all, Madam Chair, nice to see you presiding over this committee again and all the familiar faces that we've spoken to over the years. It's nice to see you. For those people that I have not met, and for the record, my name is Tom Tower and I live in Whitefield, New Hampshire. And I'm here also representing North Country Alliance for Balanced Change. I'd like to think that that every bill that comes before, you know, this committee is important. And I've seen an awful lot of them over the years. But not all of them are urgent. This one is urgent. And I'm going to take just a minute to read a few of the passages that are in that New Hampshire Bulletin piece, which I think will further exemplify why we feel this is urgent. So Representative Germana spoke about a situation that occurred in Bethlehem. And in that particular facility, leachate is pumped off the liner where it travels through pipes and onto a storage tank before getting trucked off the facility and treated. From the second half of twenty twenty-one to the first half of twenty twenty-three, the landfill pumped out two point eight million gallons of leachate per quarter. That skyrocketed from the second half of twenty twenty-three to the beginning of twenty twenty-four to five point two million gallons per quarter. By rule, landfills are also required to have systems in place to prevent more than twelve inches of leachate from being stored on the liner. On hundreds of occasions, between July twenty twenty-three and June twenty twenty-four, the Bethlehem facility failed to keep to that required level. And in one instance, that level was a hundred and sixteen point four two inches, almost ten times higher than required. Now, why is that important? There's a reason that DES has rules in place that leachate shouldn't be any higher than twelve inches because when it does go higher than twelve inches, it puts an undue amount of stress on that infrastructure and could potentially lead to a disastrous issue of contamination and certainly PFAS contamination. HB five sixty-six addresses a regulatory gap, requiring detailed planning for the backend, including transportation and wastewater treatment. The plans do not include that today. Today, it's primarily collection and storage. Does this put an undue burden? I shouldn't say undue, but does it place additional burdens on an applicant? Well, yes, it does. Yes, it does. But at the same time, the benefits of health and the the benefits to local economy surrounding these areas that are potentially contaminated are incomparable. And I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. Any questions from the Representative Bixby?
Yes, so thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Tower, for coming in. So do, am I correct in in understanding your testimony as saying that the advantage of this bill over existing rules is that this bill actually covers the entire life cycle of the leachate process as opposed to just the front end of it?
That is correct. And life cycle certainly can't be on infinitum, but there's already been amendments to clarify the fact that you couldn't put mechanisms in place or contracts, say, beyond a twenty-year horizon. I haven't seen the amendment. But yes, that is correct, Representative Bixby.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tower. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you, Committee.
Mr. Wayne Morrison, also from North Country ABC. You've asked for five minutes, but if something's already been said that you've heard, please refrain from repeating it. Welcome. Mike? There you go.
You may want me to turn it off. I came this far, I might as well deliver. Before I I I probably won't need five minutes, but I have some written testimony. But I wanted to put my view of this bill in context before I started. I think this committee, certainly myself, six years ago, when I think of a landfill, I think of trash haulers, I think of a mountain of trash. I think of odors, scavenger birds, you know, noise. That's the part of the landfill that I understood. And I had no view, I had no insight into the invisible part of the dangers of a landfill, which is leachate. And although we are deeply concerned about, you know, protecting the environment and our our water, I have come to learn that leachate is a much greater risk to our health and our safety than that mountain of trash that we can all see very visibly. I don't know if you know it or not, but landfills generate an incredible volume, a staggering amount of this leachate. It's my understanding that in the the six landfills that we have in the state of New Hampshire produce something north of a hundred million gallons of leachate every year. That's an unbelievable amount that has to be dealt with. And leachate, as you may know, is a cocktail of heavy metals, toxins, PFAS. And the process that we have today, the best available system we have today is all of that leachate in one form or another is either trucked or piped to a municipal solid waste facility. And if everything works perfectly, some of those toxins are removed and some of them aren't. And PFAS, for example, either ends up being concentrated into sludge or bricks that go back to the landfill or a certain percentage of it, the solution we have today is to dilute it into our rivers. In many cases, the Merrimack River. So forgetting about spills and leaks and problems, if the system's working perfectly, we have a flawed system to begin with. To me, the reason to even point that out, the volume of this stuff, is I think the legislature needs to stand up and and make a policy position on this stuff. I am guessing that your constituents near those wastewater treatment plants have no idea what's being released into the river. I think we need to be prudent, diligent. I don't know if this creates a little bit more work for the operators, but the risk to human health and to the environment is great. And leachate is becoming a greater and greater problem. What you heard earlier was the climate has changed. We are having more severe storms. It is going to be probably more and more difficult to predict how much leachate is gonna be generated each year. And we don't have a lot of excess capacity at our municipal solid waste facilities. I think this is a policy decision. There are rules. Today, I would say, they're not effective enough. We can't be careful enough with how we handle this stuff. So I would ask the committee to think hard about this is, this is risks and benefits to the people of the state. And the downside of a problem with leachate is a is a huge problem. And we can't be careful enough. So I I think from my my testimony is NCABC strongly supports this bill. The more we learn about leachate, the more concerned we should be. And today, we don't, may maybe technology will save us. Maybe we will figure out a way to remove some of those toxins. But today, they're not totally removed. And I would ask the committee to think hard about how can we put every bell and whistle in place to protect not only the environment, but the health and safety of citizens who today, I'll bet, most are unaware of the risk that that they're under. So we strongly would suggest you support this bill.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morrison. Yeah, I have a question from Representative Potenza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for coming in with your testimony. Just for the record, I think it's important, could you explain, because I know you know, the process of when leachate's like leaving, let's say, NCS in Bethlehem and goes to a wastewater treatment plant, that process, how it's a circular motion and then it ends up coming back into the landfill?
Yeah, so, and again, I I I I I've been on a crash course in learning about this stuff because, you know, it's complicated. But, you know, leachate in various forms has to be first collected in the liner, then generally stored, you know, pumped and stored on tanks and then pumped out of those tanks into into trucks. Trucked a hundred miles down to either Concord or Manchester or Franklin or one of the waste treatment facilities in the area. It goes through a process. Some of the materials are collected in solids and and brought back to the landfill. And the the effluent is then released after the processing into the river. So we have a very convoluted system, right? I mean, if you think about what's happening in the state, half of our waste comes from out of state. So you think about the the footprint, right? We're driving hundreds of miles up, in the case of NCES, to with trash. We're extracting the leachate and then going a hundred miles south to the waste treatment plants. I think what the article that my colleague Tom Tower brought forward is a, you know, there were problems. And part of the reason there were problems was there was capacity issues at the municipal solid waste facilities. I guess that's not Casella's fault. You know, they they had, they didn't have a, they didn't have a solution. It is their fault to let significant amounts of leachate build up in the liner system because that's a big, that's a structural infrastructure problem. The liner could fail. But whatever whatever happened, there's there's a limited amount of capacity. And it it, to me, it just reinforces how we need to be extremely diligent. We need to reduce, we need to move our our efforts towards diversion and 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 stop bringing so much, you know, we gotta reduce the amount of trash. And and trash, you should think of trash as And and trash, you should think of trash as leachate. They are one and the same. You can't have one without the other. And leachate is extremely dangerous, and we can't be too careful.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming today. I'd like to call John Swan from Safe Forest Lake uh to come and speak. You've asked for three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, thank you for taking my testimony. My name is John Swan. I'm the founder of Safe Forest Lake. I live in Dalton, New Hampshire. Um, I will try and be uh as brief as possible. Um, I do need to preface my testimony by stating that in order to not get sued a third time by Casella Waste Systems, I need you to understand that all of my testimony is my opinion, based on my research, my experience. I want to say first off, I I I did email um well-documented testimony to each of you. I hope you received it. I hope you had a chance to read it. I also want to point out that uh by my tally online, it looks like two hundred and sixty-five uh citizens from New Hampshire weighed in, took time out of their day to weigh in and support of this. So people realize that obviously in New Hampshire, we have an issue with protecting clean water as well as PFAS, uh landfill leachate, as well as biosolids and land application as we're seeing what's happening in Maine, but I digress. Um, I did want to um state that I am not really a fan of the amended version that I heard at the beginning by uh Representative Germana because partly I'm concerned that the the fingerprint of DES, which is part of the problem and industry is on this amendment, and uh I I'm not a fan of it. Furthermore, I'd like to say I do support the bill as introduced. However, OTPA, because I'd like to see it amended to remove existing facilities, in part because the and once once GSL stopped in Dalton, and it will, because it's, we've we've been at this for six years, we're not gonna stop. Governor Ayotte has come out against it. But once that's stopped, Casella will probably go back to NCS in Bethlehem to seek an expansion. And I would hate to see they be exempt exempted from this requirement since they are kind of the the impetus for this bill, and I had nothing to do with this bill. Uh, over the course of the past year, I have sent the committee a lot of documentation relative to the April twenty-second or so, April leachate emergency at the Bethlehem facility um in which they had an issue with finding sources for their leachate, their landfill leachate. In fact, just to clarify, um part of it's not the wastewater treatment plant's ability to have capacity to accept the leachate, it's the toxicity. Concord decided to limit in early twenty twenty-four the intake of NCS landfill leachate because of the tox- tox- the toxicity of it. Since then, uh Manchester was taking some, however, I was told they are not taking it because of the PFAS in the leachate. So just a point of clarification, some of the NCS leachate is being shipped as far away as Madison, Maine and to um New Jersey. So I do want to get back to my testimony, though, because I did, in my in my documents, I sent you I sent you a September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four letter from the department, a request for more information to Casella NCS landfill. And in that, um the department, the first point, they asked for written agreements of no less than two locations for leachate treatment or disposal to manage the quantity of leachate generated by the facility during its active life, consistent with ENV SW eight oh six oh five B three and pursuant to ENV SW eleven oh five dot eleven. So I did, uh furthermore, in my testimony, I broke down both of those. Eight oh six oh five B requires two locations for the active life. It's already in the rules. Second, eleven oh five ten B states that uh facility shall obtain and maintain access to at least two authorized locations where adequate capacity exists to handle the basically residual waste during its operating and post-closure period. So it's already in the rules. It's already in the rules. However, if the department comes up and does testify, taking a non-position on this bill and then stating why they're opposed to the bill, perhaps you can ask the department why they're not enforcing these rules. Because I have sent, and it's in your packet, a ninety-one A right-to-no request to the department asking for a copy of those two written agreements that they asked for in that September twenty-fourth letter of the NCS facility, and the response I got from the department, and it's in your packet, they have no record of that. So right now, there's two rules covering leachate. There's no record. There's no written agreement. That's what was part of the problem in April. They were shifting around, trying to find people who would take their leachate as it was raining and and they were working on stage six, phase two, et cetera, et cetera. Furthermore, I then asked, because we're talking about a new landfill that's gonna generate, it's gonna be bigger than NCS, and the permitted capacity life is the 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 annual permitted capacity in the permit for GSL is two point five times what NCS is currently permitted to accept. Six hundred thousand cubic yards a year versus two hundred and thirty, two hundred thousand cubic yards a year. That's two point five times. What does that buy GSL with all that land? It buys room for further permitted capacity life beyond eighteen years because if that is not exhausted, they can continue to operate. By my tally, and I put it in the Forest Lake landfill information sheet that I sent you, that's about forty-six years of permitted life for GSL. Second, I asked for written agreements for leachate generation, leachate disposal for GSL. There are none. I got the same response from DES. They have no written agreements. And I did want to let you know that in the current permit applications for the GSL landfill in Dalton, they have already changed who the wastewater treatment plants that would accept their leachate in the operating plan, uh removing, I can't remember, Concord, um but including New Jersey and Maine. So and all of that has to be trucked. It's not like it, it's not like Turnkey, which is attached to a wastewater treatment plant or AVAR up in uh, you know, um Success, New Hampshire, which is tied into a wastewater treatment plant. All of NCS landfill leachate has to be trucked to a plant. Same thing with GSL. It's the same concept as NCS. And I ask you, where is that leachate going to go if there's no cure for PFAS? There's no uh wastewater treatment plant that's gonna accept it? What happens? That's what we're asking. And we've tested our wells. We've tested the lake. We've tested Alderbrook, which is what the wetlands flow into, that then flow into the Ammanusick River. We've tested all that. I've done the testing for PFAS. There's no detections. We've tested thirty-nine homes around the vicinity of the GSL site. No detections for PFAS. I've included that in the testimony I've sent you, at great expense and time. And furthermore, GSL itself has tested its own monitoring wells at the proposed site. They have no detections for PFAS contamination at that facility or at that site. It's not a facility yet. So hopefully, you will do the right thing. We need written agreements, it's already in the rules, to protect New Hampshire. Again, I'm concerned because DES is not enforcing the current rules that are on the books. I feel that amendment to this bill needs to be made, and it needs, as Representative Wheeler attested to, it's gonna give enforcement strength to the rules requiring these facilities to have a contract or an agreement. So with that, I mean, I won't take up any more of your time. I would just say that, you know, in twenty twenty-three, NCS produced eleven million gallons of leachate. That was in twenty twenty-three. We haven't seen the facility report for twenty twenty-four. That has to be trucked somewhere. Who's gonna take it? And why isn't DES enforcing the rules on the books right now? So happy to take any questions. I believe I can provide any answers you need because I've been studying this for six years.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Appreciate it. Uh, you don't see any questions, and thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you.
Uh, last, I have Director Michael Wimsat from uh New Hampshire DES. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Um, happy to be for you this morning. For the record, my name is Mike Wimsat. I serve as Director of the Waste Management Division for New Hampshire DES. Um, G uh DES is not taking a position on this bill. Uh, as uh Representative Germana, the sponsor, has indicated, we've had some discussions at length about the content of this bill and uh worked well together to address uh some some questions that that we had. Um, I have not actually seen the amendment, but I think I understand its content based on the representative's description of it. You know, our sense of this bill is that the concerns we had with relate in relation to the bill as introduced have largely been addressed. Um, I think uh in response to some of the things that have been said here this morning, I think what this adds um by 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 amending the statute to have explicit language relative to leachate management and the requirement for leachate management plan is it just makes it more clear and explicit. Um, the including details of contracts that um that that folks have for management of leachate um is something that uh the 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 current rules say you have to have a two, at least two outlets for your leachate, but they don't specify necessarily the details of the contract. So that is a new addition. And uh we don't, we don't have any particular concerns about that. Um, and then um I think that it perhaps provides a longer view in terms of making it explicit that the leachate management plan at the outset needs to address um not just the operating period, but the post-closure care period. And uh I think what it really does is it just puts a current practice into law. And in our ex- experience with respect to doing compliance assurance and enforcement, having provisions directly in statute is is a powerful thing. You have to do it carefully because you you we we can't have statutes that are so lengthy and detailed that they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna look like administrative rules. But for certain things, it's nice to have that clear, explicit authority in the statute. And with that, I think I'd just be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Representative King?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for taking questions. Philosophically, um just aside from this specific issue, if there are rules, agency rules um that are there, do they have the authority to waive those rules or un- not enforce those rules? Because there seems to be some questioning of why it is that there'd be rules that aren't being enforced, and I'm just wondering if they have the authority to waive rules or or and I'm not just saying specifically in regards to to leachate, but just any rules in general. Can they, can can the agency just choose to unenforce rules?
The the well, the applicant um can make application for, if they feel that there's a rule that they cannot comply with, but they have a they propose an alternate way of addressing the concern, that the statute does allow the department to entertain a request for a waiver of a specific rule. And then in the rules, there are specific criteria that need to be met in order for the department to approve that waiver request. So we do that sparingly, but it does happen uh in some cases.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, sure. Thank you for that. Um, now getting back to the specific topic at hand, it um, is it your contention that there have been rules in place regarding leachate that have not been enforced? And and if so, have there been any applications for such?
No, no, we we I don't believe we have any applications for waivers with respect to leachate management, and the department always endeavors to enforce all of its rules, including the leachate rules, and I I believe that we are doing that.
Thank you.
Representative Gruber?
Thank you for uh coming here and testifying once again. It was stated earlier that this bill uh will constrain the rulemaking process, and uh you understand that in your agency very closely. Do you think that's the case, or what the your discussions with the Representative Germana, that this would not be the case?
Uh, again, I I have not actually seen this, physically seen the amendment, but I think I know what it looks like based on the discussions we've had um in in the in the sponsor's description of it here this morning. I don't see any particular areas where it constrains the department in a way that would cause concern for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Representative Bigsby?
Um, yeah, so one of the things that seems to be a little bit unclear still, uh just in terms of our knowledge, is what how the enforcement process works.
Sure. So um, I, you know, our approach, not just in the solid waste program, but across DES programs, is to use, you know, compliance assurance and enforcement in order to ensure we have compliance with rules. And compliance assurance starts with education. It starts with educating the regulated parties on what the requirements are that they have to comply with. And then it's monitoring, which means inspections or or paperwork reviews, whatever is more appropriate, to determine whether the rules are being complied with. And in cases where we identify um non-compliance, we uh do a tiered, kind of a tiered structured process where we we request compliance. Could be through an informal letter, could be through a letter of deficiency that's issued. Um, and if that's not uh effective, then we we have the authority under specifically under our solid waste program to issue a a unilaterally, a unilateral administrative order to compel compliance. And that is basically a an enforceable document that that uh that require, that lays out what the violations are and and gives the the applicant or gives the uh the regulated party a certain amount of time to come into compliance and demonstrate compliance. And then if that doesn't happen, again, in the case of the solid waste program, we have both um uh authority through the using the New Hampshire Department of Justice to seek uh injunctive relief through civil or criminal enforcement and also to issue um civil penalties. So that's the kind of the gamut of what could happen.
Okay. Representative Comtwa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Director, for being here and taking my question. We've been hearing a lot about leachate um which we know needs to be managed. Um I just had a question because in twenty twenty-three, we had a catastrophic event in New Hampshire um with flash flooding um in certain areas where landfills were. Now, under a leach does a leach a management plan plan for those catastrophes? Or and when or when they do happen, what does the de- how does the department handle that? And are, do you have personnel to help guide? And help with mitigation, I guess, in those events? Um, because as as you know, twenty twenty-three was a catastrophic year, so.
Sure. Uh, leachate management plan is really intended to be comprehensively look at what can happen over the life of the landfill, and we know it's it's no, you know, it's clear to us that there are gonna be extreme precipitation events, both in terms of duration and intensity. They're gonna stress those systems, and so those systems are uh required to be designed to handle certain um level of uh precipitation event. In the case where the more extreme events happen, there are provisions made to store up to twelve inches of leachate on the liner. And in fact, we have had, you know, a facility that has had violations, significant violations of that, which we've referred to the New Hampshire Department of Justice um for for enforcement. Uh, but with respect to what we do in practice, you know, we we know that those those events do stress these systems. And there are the the leachate management plan and the and the the contracts and such that that uh operators are required to have should make provision for handling that and and being able to realize there's gonna be an increased bulk of leachate that's gonna have to be managed for a period of time. And and then also to manage the operations at the landfill to effectively minimize the generation of leachate, because there are things you can do to ensure that the bulk of the precipitation that falls on the facility um is collected and goes to stormwater collection before it ever contacts any waste. Um, so anything that can do that, that's managed to stormwater on the facility and doesn't have to be collected and trucked off. But anything that contacts the waste should be collected in a leachate management system and properly handled as leachate.
Thank you. Representative Potenza, and then Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for my question. I just want to understand enforcement. There's been um hundreds of violation letters that have been sent out. So each one of those, at this point, should have um penalties. Could you tell me what the what the amount of um monetary penalties have been so far for all of these violation letters in total?
The, well, to be clear, I don't believe there's been hundreds of letters. There were hundreds of examples of individual days where there were violations that occurred. And we have a number of enforcement documents that we issued for that facility that address the, that name those and identify them and and compel compliance. The whole issue of um uh enforcement through any penalty action has been referred to the New Hampshire Department of Justice, and I'm unfortunately, just not at liberty to discuss that until it's reconciled. It's still in process.
Okay. Representative Howard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, before, with absent this law, this act, what does he would the application for a permit address adequately address leachate management? I I I someone earlier referred to a gap. Is is that the gap is the detail?
Sure, and and an application for a permit today Sure. And, and, and application for a permit today, under today's statutory language and under our today's administrative rules absolutely does require that, um, before we give operating approval for a facility, a detailed leachate management plan needs to be included in the operating plan for that facility. And that is subject to review and, and needs to meet certain requirements. It's reviewed by DES engineers. And before that would, operating approval would be granted for the facility. We would look to that plan to make sure that the operating plan covers many things. But with respect specifically to leachate management, that it, that it, um, describes an adequate and, and compliant program for collecting, managing, disposing of leachate.
Representative Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Let's just suppose that, that there is a catastrophic failure. Are the plans in place to deal with this? Or once it gets into the, once it gets into the aquifer, it's sort of, so to speak, the camels got their nose underneath the tent?
Right. So if, in the case of, uh, we have a, a robust system of monitoring for landfills that requires that, um, monitoring wells be placed around the perimeter of the landfill to monitor groundwater quality to detect whether the landfills have any adverse impacts on groundwater quality around the facility. In the cases where, um, detections of contaminants are, are made, then, um, enhanced monitoring happens and investigations are required to identify the source of that, whether it's from a, an errant problem with stormwater or whether it's an actual leachate release or whatever it might be. And then if that's, uh, determined to be, um, at issue, then a corrective action plan is required to address that, uh, which couldn't, which certainly includes stopping, doing whatever's necessary to, to cease any release that's occurring, but also can include a requirement to, um, treat any contaminated groundwater to, to restore it to meet groundwater quality standards.
Follow up?
Follow up?
Thank you. So once, uh, again, uh, just let me be clear, once, once there is a catastrophe, let's say, in the one, in, in, you said there's some mitigation plans, uh, in place, but, uh, suppose it goes beyond that. Suppose that, you know, it, it gets out of control. It was, was mentioned earlier, uh, there was a hundred and something inches of leachate in these liners. They're not designed for that.
Right. We, we've made it clear that that's a non-compliant condition and, and we're seeking enforcement with, with respect to that.
Any other questions from the committee? Representative Bixby?
Yeah, so, um, this is, uh, in, in some sense, a follow-up on Representative Howard, Howard's question. Do you see this bill, uh, with the potential amendment you heard this morning as providing the department with, or potentially the, providing the department with, uh, tools to create better, uh, leachate management plans going forward?
I would say anytime, um, a particular authority is ensconced in the statute directly and explicitly, that's can be helpful to us, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Representative Patenza?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking my question. Um, based upon the information that I have researched, um, over the past twenty years of the, for example, the Bethlehem facility has only been charged tw- two thousand dollars in civil penalties. Um, so do you, are you saying that you don't have the authority to impose fines? And if you're saying that, do you just send it over to the DOJ and wait? And do you know how many right now, um, are in like holding pattern? Because two thousand dollars over twenty years doesn't seem like very much.
Um, no, we absolutely have authority to seek penalties. We, we, if, to the extent that we are seeking civil penalties or criminal sanctions, then we are required to work with the Department of Justice to accomplish that. They're the, they're the, our mistake government has the authority to, to, to address those things in the courts. But we work closely with them. It's not as though we write, we refer it and then just wait to see what they do. Our staff, our compliance staff and our engineers will work with them to make sure they understand the severity of the violations and the concern and, and, you know, any penalties that are being recommended. Uh, as far as, uh, past history, um, maybe it's more than twenty years. I believe there was another penalty that was much more substantial than that that was levied against that facility. But it, it may be more than twenty years ago that occurred. It was on the order of around, I believe, around two hundred thousand dollars.
Representative Scully?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for being here. Um, do the leachate management plans that the department reviews, do they specify what they anticipate to be the volume of leachate? And does your department require that an excess volume of storage and treatment be there to deal with some of these, um, un, you know, planable events?
Yeah, I mean, generally, those, those plans would include estimates of the amount of leachate that would be generated. And the expectation is that the, and the requirement is that the applicant have, uh, contracts and, and outlet facilities that are capable of managing, uh, both the routine, uh, everyday amounts of leachate as well as, uh, area, you know, times of increased, um, generation of leachate. There are certain times when increased leachate is gonna happen because of the stage of construction that a particular cell is at. So that when you have more of a cell open to precipitation, you're gonna have increased volumes of leachate. And the expectation is the applicant always has contractual, um, uh, agreements with wastewater facilities that can accept those, those volumes.
Okay.
A quick follow-up. So we do not, at this point, specify any excess capacity over and above what, what they're claiming to be the amount that's being generated?
I, I, I'm not aware that there's a rule that talks about excess capacity. I mean, the, again, in practice, what our engineers are doing is they're looking at a leachate management plan, making an assessment about whether it provides an adequate, um, that, that it's estimating reasonable, reasonably what could be generated at the facility and then making sure there's a plan for managing that safely. I, I haven't personally reviewed these, so I don't, I don't really wanna comment too, too authoritatively on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Representative Bixby?
Yeah, so I'd like to get a little bit back to the enforcement process. And, uh, so, uh, we have, um, articles about, newspaper, newspaper articles about, um, what seemed to be an excessive number of violations in twenty twenty four, uh, at a particular landfill. And you have mentioned that, uh, you have recert, re, uh, referred some of that issue to the, the Department of Justice. And I'm just wondering, uh, are, do you have limitations about what you can say publicly when you refer something to the Department of Justice? And what's the typical time scale that it takes them to reason, to come out with a recommendation or a penalty?
Well, thank you for the question. Yeah, it's certainly the case that I'm not at liberty to discuss that case in any detail at this point. It wouldn't be appropriate to do so while it's still in process. Um, the time period for these sorts of things can be variable. Some cases can be, um, sought and, you know, initiated and settled fairly quickly or, or go to court um, relatively quickly, and others may take more time. It's, it's really, I, I don't think there's an average. We don't have a lot of these cases. And the reality is, is that, you know, from my perspective, I mean, I've been, um, spent much of my career allied with, uh, compliance and enforcement programs. And, um, guys like me never think it's fast enough. That's just, uh, the, the way we're wired. But, um, uh, I, I, I wish I could give you an average, but I don't think there really is one.
Follow up?
So, um, so, so you said that you, you can't discuss that case, which I, I'm not, I'm not asking you to discuss it. But, um, just in terms of the implications of discussing it, uh, would discussing it, um, create problems for the Department of Justice to actually, uh, get the information they need and create the case without jeopardizing the, the ability to prosecute it?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question.
There are certain things you need to keep confidential. And, uh, is the reason that you need to keep those confidential in order to protect the ability of the DOJ to actually prosecute the case?
Right. They, the, 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 I think the general rule of thumb is, and it's a good one, is that if you're engaged in enforcement, they could end up in litigation. You should say nothing about the case and, and outside of that, the actual activities of the case, because it just, it, you know, if I say something errant here or thoughtless, I'm gonna end up being deposed about it for eight hours when, if we go into litigation. So there's no advantage to that. It, it, it disadvantages the state's case whenever a state employee who's involved in enforcement discusses publicly the, the details of that case.
And follow up?
Follow up?
So, uh, and in terms of time scale, uh, I know that, you, that it's highly variable, but, um, it would be, would you say it would be really surprising to refer something to the DOJ and get an app, get, get something back in, say, a month or two?
Uh, for, if, 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 if we're referring for civil penalties, yeah, that would be very, that'd be very fast. I'd be surprised to see if that happened.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? Representative Patenza?
Sorry. Representative Bixby just brought up some other things. Thank you, Madam Chair. Last question on this. Okay, so I, I think he's talking about one thing. I guess my questions were down a different path. So if, especially, you know, you have a, you have hundreds of violations that the landfill knows that they're in violation of, these are penalties. There, there comes with a, a, a case of that. That's all public knowledge. I'm not talking about further investigations, lawsuits or any of that kind of stuff. I'm talking about cut and dry, where we know certain things that are coming directly from the landfill or coming directly from you, coming from wastewater treatment plants, that are all clear-cut violations, which has fines. Why can't we know the number of those that have been, that have been sent or that are, um, that are up in the air at this point? Um, that shouldn't be a secret. That's public information. Um, so that's my first question is why wouldn't, why can't we get that information? And there wouldn't be this need for this investigation or any of that if these are clear-cut cases, which a lot of them are.
Any documents that have been issued to the, to the perma-T um, or any, any documents at all, other than our direct communications with the Department of Justice relative to this enforcement case are absolutely public and your, those are all available to this committee or any member of the public.
Follow up?
So could, um, I'm asking for the agency to send the committee, just so we have that, a list of every single violation that has taken place, uh, in the last two years for, um, that landfill, the Bethlehem landfill, please. Every single violation, um, I'd love a, a nice grouping of all of them. And if, um, if there is automatically in statute or in place certain, um, number amounts of what those violations would cost, that would be helpful to have that as well.
Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you so much, uh, Director Wimsat from, for, uh, coming to speak with us about this bill this morning. And, uh, I would like the blue sheet. If anybody else has anything to say. I don't have any more pink cards. Um, I do know that, as was referenced before, uh, regarding online testimony, we had two hundred sixty-five people write us in support of this bill and four persons, uh, indicated that they oppose it. And the blue sheet is coming to us shortly. Okay. Thank you. On our blue sheet, we had six persons sign in, um, in, um, support of this legislation. And with that, I'm going to close the hearing on HB three five five.